Now, time to start. So, welcome to our monthly council meeting. Would you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Well, again, we want to welcome you all, family and friends, to be here this evening. And so, we're going to do something, which is often the case when we have certain ceremonial things, is we're going to move up the agenda item into the mayor comments. We're going to actually be giving some... Mr. Norberg has something for Chief Latimer, and then we're going to actually officially swear him in as well. And so, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Norberg, and then we'll come here and do the swearing in. And then, I also want to let everybody else know, we have some other accolades for some other members, I think, of the Fire Department. So, stick around. And also, when we do this, be free to move, take pictures, videos, please. Be free to do that, and we celebrate that, all of these moments.
Chief, I get to do this last thing where I get to call you Lieutenant.
I have one more on it.
So, this is a certificate from the city thanking now Chief, but Lieutenant Zach Latimer for his outstanding service, leadership, and management from the city of Kokil as an interim Fire Chief in 2025.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
All right. Do you want to copy to follow?
No, just repeat after me.
All right, well, again, it's my great privilege. I love that Mr. Norberg said, hey, this is going to be a new tradition. Let's swear in our chief. And so, it is definitely a privilege for me to be able to swear you in, Chief Latimer, and appreciate all your hard work, and the department, and the great work that they do. So, I'm excited for this season.
Yeah, we're super excited to see what's going to happen.
Yeah, so, you have quite the rapport.
Yeah.
So, all right, well, go ahead and raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, Zach Latimer.
I, Zach Latimer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And the laws of the city of Kokil.
And the laws of the city of Kokil.
During my appointment to this office as chief.
During my appointment to this office as chief.
I will faithfully perform the duties of Fire Chief.
I will faithfully perform the duties as Fire Chief.
Of the city of Kokil.
Of the city of Kokil.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Nice, awesome. Come on, let's do a picture. Not that one. That one's the marked one.
Oh, that one?
Yeah. Come on up. Get right in here, right in here. Let's get pictures, right here. All right, look, we'll do one with me and one without. Okay, now let me step out, you guys.
I don't know who said that, but thank you.
Just take the picture. Oh, you need one too?
Yeah, I need one too.
All right.
Well, again, congratulations, Chief Latimer. That was fun. Mr. Norberg, do we need to move on to... It's Agenda Item Number 10, Presentation of Accolades for Fire Department. I think that's you, Mr. Norberg. And Chief, yeah, 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 go ahead. It's all you. Definitely want to do it in the microphone, so people online can hear that as well.
Right. So, the first award that we have today is also going to be for my Assistant Chief, Dave. Dave, you can come up here. So, Dave was my better half, if you will, during this interim chief run. He was kind of my words of wisdom. If I had a problem, I'd call Dave, ask him what he'd say. Most of the time, it's kind of the same thing of what I was thinking, but he just kind of reiterated that and drove that home to me. Dave's been part of the department for a long time, and I couldn't do it without him. So, Dave, this is for appreciation of being the Assistant Chief and the interim chief, and everything that you've done for us and me getting up to this point.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
But those are the people who thank. Our volunteers, our volunteers are the ones the council needs to thank.
Yeah.
I'm not one person, two people, we can't be at the department. These are the guys at the department. And if you could thank them, I would appreciate that.
Sure. So, my next one is for Lieutenant Trevor Davis. So, Trevor's really stepped up in a big way. He was the sole paramedic that we had for a while after, you know, Justin left and with some other people left. Trevor was the sole medic. He kind of held the ship together for us on the ambulance side, as having a paramedic. So, without Trevor, we would kind of have to close the doors on the ambulance. So, him sticking around, picking up extra shifts, picking up long hours, we couldn't have done it without Trevor and helping with that. So, thank you, sir. All right, Sandra, if you could come up here as well. For these next ones, something that we kind of knew to do, and I thank the Employee of the Month. So, for the Employee of the Month, I had two individuals here. Both of them are standing right here. Again, we could not have done it without them. Sandra, you know, stepping up in a big way, pulling a shift lead, doing all the things that, you know, that we couldn't do without her, helping out with the OHA, the restock, making sure our ambulance was set to how it needed to be so we can continue providing the best service that we can to the public, to the customers. So, without you guys, we would not be able to do this, and I appreciate you guys very much. So, here's your awards. Thank you.
All right, great. Well, thank Chief. Those are the best kind of mayor comments, right there. We're going to move on to council comments now, and we're back on our agenda. And what a great time to celebrate, so... And we're not going to be offended at all if people are here just for that moment and you decide to leave, so don't worry about that, okay? Go ahead, take your moment. You have our permission, by all means. All right. Counselor Corbus?
I have no comments, Dad.
All right, Counselor Cooper?
I just want to say congratulations, Chief. It's been awesome seeing you climb up through the ranks and be well respected all the way through the process of rising to where you are. And it's awesome having somebody that knows what the city's gone through and has so much respect in our community, continue to be promoted from within. So, congratulations.
Counselor Flynn?
Just echo that, just want to say congratulations, and thank you for all that you do, and excited for the future.
Counselor Windington?
Yeah, congrats, Zach. Very proud of you. You know, my door is always open, my phone's always on for you. We'll definitely try to meet, and if you ever need anything, just let me know. On Assistant Chief Sclary's comment, I couldn't agree 100% more. When I was chief, we had 40 to 50 volunteers, and it took all those. You're the top person, everybody's going to look at you. Just remember, you have 40 or 50 below you that are doing a great job, and I know you'll appreciate them, and I will always appreciate them on what they're doing. So, on the EMS side and the fire side.
Great, thank you, Counsel Windington. And Counsel Westrum is not well this evening, so our best wishes to him as he's recovering. So, we're going to go on to... Consent calendar, and Jenna, I am number five.
I'll make a motion to accept consent calendar 10-6-25.
Second. All right, motion by Counsel Cooper. To adopt the consent calendar, seconded by Counsel Windington. Any other discussion? Favor? Hi.
Hi.
Namely, thank you. And staff reports, first up, City Manager, Mr. Norberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors. Well, we just did part of my report, which was the new tradition, which I think was pretty cool, honestly. I'm going to let our chief talk a little bit about... My report had talked about the Fire EMS passes, the OHA inspection. I'm sure he'll talk about that, but that was a pretty darn good moment for the city. Other than that, I don't have anything to add unless you've got a question about something else in my report.
All right. You also have the next one, finance report.
Indeed, okay. So, you have a finance report. This is a little different look than what you've seen in the past, only... I know, it's minute detail stuff. But, you know, the finance report is not the November finance report, right? It's October 23rd, it's to a specific date, right? Because we run a report, we put together a report, we put it in the council packet, so it's aging while it sits there, right? Since this report's come out, actually, with the help of staff, figured out how to start doing transfers in the budget. You know, we had a couple places where it like looks negative, fire being one of those. And since this report was written, we actually got that done, that particular one. We had some problems with our software company trying to tell us to do it one way, which was fascinating to undo, but we got that done. And now, we're on track to do those. So, your next month's report, the one you'll get in November, will actually show that that's all shored up, that's good to go. Good thing about November is it's revenue month, right? So, we'll get, you know, the bulk of our property taxes for both the URA and the general fund of the city. You know, I'll just say, if you have questions about the finance report, you know, let me know. You know, this is all done by hand, and since this report was done with the help of Emily Caffey, we now have it converted to an Excel sheet, so it'll be so much quicker to do, which is great, and we didn't have that before. So, anyway, you know, they're doing... The staff's doing a good job, and we're gaining ground, as I said in my other report, making progress. And I think, you know, overall, we're looking pretty good on expenditures versus revenues, those kind of things. A few little tweaks here and there. But, anyway, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're on our packet here, we've got our fire and EMS packet.
Forrest said, we had the OHA inspection, we haven't had one since 2019. And in 2019, they did find some discrepancies and things that we were lacking and things that weren't up to their expectations or what the states that we have to have in order to continue providing EMS services. Sandra and Trevor have worked tirelessly to make sure we had every single thing that we needed. When the lady came through, she, you know, she flat out said, I did not expect this to go this way. I was fully expecting this to go the opposite way. There's nothing on this report that you guys need to change. The only thing that we were missing was a neonate BVM mask, which we had on order, but it was on back order. Well, the day after she was here and finished her inspection, it showed up in the mail. We sent her a picture of it, said we got it. We got a clean bill of health, which she said we were one of two departments that she's done this year that's passed it with flying colors, which is huge for us, like, super huge. The other thing that I want to add, we did hire a full-time paramedic. He was going to start next week. We're super excited for him to join us. I think he's going to be a big asset to our crew, and so, we're excited to see what's going to happen with him. I can answer any other questions that you guys have.
Well, again, great work, I mean, to your team, and Trevor, and Sandra, and the whole team. So, thank you. Huge. Good job. All right, moving on. Thanks, Chief. All right, Planning Department, Haley Sheldon.
I do not have anything to add to my report. Let me know if you have any questions.
No question.
Nope, no questions, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your report, I liked the recap. I think I mentioned it last month, that the grants in process, so it's very helpful. Thank you. Thank you. And Mr. Denny's not here this evening, but anything on Public Works? I'm sure Mr. Norberg...
I'd be happy to do that, Mr. Mayor. Mark did want me to convey the fact that we did receive a $25,000 grant from the Roundhouse Foundation towards that fitness court that he's been working diligently on. So, that's pretty cool, that's some progress. And other than that, if you've got any other questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Questions? All right. Just a shout out to Mr. Denny's crew, the Public Works crew, they did a great job. They have been doing a great job. And of course, all the work on the strike down Central Two, and getting flashing lights on those signs. Just be safe out there, folks, as we get used to new traffic patterns. Can't be public? Can't be. Where I used to live, like, 12 years ago. Kokil Public Library. Director Lucas?
Thank you. I have nothing to add, but I do want to point out that you should drive past the library when it's not been cloudy all day long, and look at our new flagpole up against the building. With when it's all lit up, it looks really, really nice.
And just to highlight, Friends of the Library, great job for them. So, you're now open an extra day because of their effort.
Yep, half a day, from 10 to 2:00. And it's limited services because they're not staff, so they can't use the staff computers so that people who come in can only take things off the shelf and use the self-checkout machine. So, you need to bring in your library card and know your password. But at least you get to come in now. Public computers are available, people can do prints.
Yeah, great, thank you, Friends of the Library. Great job. And that helps you, of course. For just servicing not only our community, but then for your numbers for the library here as well.
Yep. So, if you just want to go in and wash your hands or get a drink of water, we're open.
As always, thank you, Director Lucas. All your programming is tremendous. Any other questions? All right, Kokil Police. Chief Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, nothing to add. However, I'll be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
I can't help myself every month, I got to say it. Thank you to all your officers, you're just doing tremendous work. It's not easy, so thank you.
I will convey that, and I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief. All right, we're going to move on to Liz Kinney, our city recorder, who's hiding behind a computer. But I am going to go ahead and read, since we did give honors to Sandra Sanders and Trevor Davis for Employee of the Month, I'm going to highlight Tyler Mailer, is it pronounced Mailer? Yeah. And so... I'm going to go ahead and read it here. Tyler was nominated for regularly taking initiative to help others even when tasks fall outside of his usual responsibilities. He's willing to respond to community needs, help his coworkers, and contribute his time and knowledge without hesitation. Others kindness and generosity extend beyond the workplace, including personally supporting coworkers facing major life changes. He leads by example through a positive attitude and strong work ethic. His eagerness to collaborate and his friendly, approachable demeanor foster a positive environment within the Public Works Department. He continuously demonstrates dedication to public service, enhancing teamwork and building trust within the community. Great job, Tyler, we appreciate you. Any other questions for Liz? All right. Great job, everybody, thank you. We are now into public participation. So, if anybody has signed up, this will be the part of the meeting where if people have signed up, we have three minutes for you to address the mayor, and it's your opportunity to have your voice heard. And we, of course, take notes and can respond afterwards. So, typically, we don't respond during the meeting. And so, do we have anybody signed up? We have one. Kim Lavy?
Hey.
Come on up, Kim.
So, it's actually Levy.
Sorry.
Okay, so, hey, congratulations, Zach. And thank you for the red lights on top of the stop signs. The stop signs, that's game changer. Okay, so, I am here on behalf of my parents. I've been Margaret Hampton and my older brother Rod. They own the two properties at the very end of the gravel part of East 7th Street here in Kokil, 900 East 7th Street and 1010 East 7th Street. My mom has talked with Forrest a few times about this, and also with Ken Wells, about the young couple that bought the property at the very bottom of their hill, my parents' hill, where their private part starts, their private drive. Because in 1981, 100 feet of the road washed out, and they had to replace it at their own cost. So, that's private drive. The couple that lives at the bottom of the hill now, both are employed by Braceland Trucking, and they're both driving their log trucks down my parents' road, which is not really built up for log trucks and heavy things like that to be driving on it. And so, they're digging ruts along the road, they're digging ruts in the road. There's a big puddle right where my parents' driveway portion starts that everybody has to drive through. My dad is currently on hospice, and so, we've got a lot of family members. Hospice nurse is driving up there. We're concerned about someone getting stuck in the road in a passenger vehicle because none of those people have four-wheel drives. We're worried about emergency vehicle access to getting up there because if the road is all dug up and rutted up, it's going to be really hard. Heaven forbid there's a fire. And since my dad is on hospice, there will be an ambulance driving up there at some point. So, they're also, my parents are very concerned about encountering one of the log trucks, perhaps coming down into the driveway area because it's a blind hairpin turn, and it's very narrow, and they're worried about someone at just the right moment. They're not driving real fast, but at just the right moment, you can't see. Also have a petition from some of the residents on East 7th Street that are not liking the truck noise as they're going down. And another gentleman is worried about his personal pickup truck being hit as they're driving down East 7th Street in the mornings. I'm not sure what kind of a solution may be done. Perhaps they could park where the crummies do out by the soccer field, just as you start to go out Fairview. I don't know, I just wanted to bring this to your attention because my parents are so, so worried about this right now. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Kim, first off, thanks for coming and speaking on behalf of your parents. Sorry to hear about your dad. And thank you. And we took notes, and I'm sure we'll be following up with you.
And I also want to highlight that you had seven seconds left, so you timed it magnificently. Great job. Okay, and there's nobody else signed up? No, sir. Okay, great, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to Agenda Item Number... Eight, Consideration of Council Applications. We have Mr. Paul Frazier here. And so, come on up, Mr. Frazier. And Counsel, he's in your packet. And why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself, Mr. Frazier?
Well, I think...
I think most of us know who you are.
Everybody knows who I am.
For the record, anyways.
Half of them probably like me, and the other half probably hate me. But I'm Paul Frazier. Lived here in the city of Kokil since 1992. I've worked in the courthouse the whole time. Came here as Chief Deputy DA from another county. When Mr. Burgett retired in 2007, the governor appointed me to take his place. And I ran for election four times after that. So, I served a total of 17 years as the DA here in Coos County. I formally retired at the end of last year, except my successor, Jody Newby, told me I couldn't leave. Had a few cases she wants me to finish up, and so, I'm still working there. I'm told that the county runs out of money to pay me at the end of December, so those cases better get done before then, or they're going to be doing them themselves. But, anyway, like I said, I'm retiring. And I've devoted my life to public service as a prosecutor, and I'm not so sure I'm ready just to fold up and sit in my armchair for the rest of my being. And I did 10 years on the school board here in Kokil. We raised six kids here in Kokil. None of them stayed, they went elsewhere. But my wife and I have no plans of moving elsewhere, so we plan on staying here. And I'm just not ready to quite hang it up yet. So, I saw you had an opening, and I thought, well, I think I have something left in me of service, and so, I think I could be of benefit to the council. So, I threw my hat in the ring. And Cooper over there twisted my arm a couple of years ago trying to get me to do it back then, but it didn't work.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. And just so that everybody else is aware, we're filling a vacancy that ends January 1st of 2027. And so... So, that was the seat that was available. Counselors, do you have any other questions?
Thank you, Paul, for applying.
Thank you for your service and for applying. And I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to appoint Mr. Frazier for a vacancy on the city council that ends January 1st, 27th, seconded by Counsel Cooper. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor? Aye. unanimous, I'm going to come right out around there towards you.
My wife decided not to come tonight because she's been to my swearing in. It was a member of the bar swearing in on the school board two or three times, four or five times as the DA, and she said, I've had enough swearing in.
We'll do a selfie together and send her a picture. All right, Mr. Frazier, if you raise your right hand. I, Paul Frazier.
I, Paul Frazier.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of city councillor.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of city councillor.
Of the city of Kokil.
Of the city of Kokil.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So, help me God.
So, help me God.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate it. That's great. Great, great, great. You're going to sign that one for me. Are you down for a selfie here?
Sure.
There we go. All right, great. Thank you. Well, you get to take your seat right over there next to Counsel Corbus. And welcome, Counselor Frazier now, so great to have you. And we are now... And we are now at agenda item number 11. Is Mr. Jeff Jackson here?
He's not.
Okay.
He couldn't be here tonight.
Yeah, no problem. And he's got an application in, again, his vacancy. He's filling previously Joe Cooner, which was starting December 31st of 2026. And that's under the city planning commission. And I will go ahead and make that motion to appoint Mr. Jackson on our planning commission. Motion by Mayor Flaherty to appoint Mr. Jackson on our planning commission, seconded by Councilor Waddington. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor? Aye. There we go. Passes unanimously there, Liz. Thank you.
And Mayor, we do have one more open position on the planning commission. If there's anyone out there listening who might want to apply.
Great. So we have one more opening. Do we have to officially open that or...
It's been.
It's still open. It's remaining open. So if you're listening in and want to be involved, city planning commission is a great way. And then also, that is the one appointment, they don't have to be within the city limits, correct? So if you have any questions, see Haley Sheldon or Mr. Neuerberger, city manager. But yes, we'd love to have more people applying. Director Lucas?
We have a library board opening too.
Okay. So we have a library board opening as well. And so with these appointments, there's an application process. We've got to get them in and then those are appointed by the council. So yeah, thank you, everybody, for your service. Right. We're going to move on to agenda item number 12. Councillors, it was just a mistake that the, most of the material supporting, the documentation supporting agenda item number 12, Consider Ordinance 1537, adopting a forest management plan. We just got that in our email today, so I'm going to go ahead and proffer a motion to table that agenda item till December 1st to allow us time to review those documents before we make a vote. Second. Okay. Motion by Mayor Flaherty to table agenda item number 12 till December 1st, seconded by Councilor Flynn. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Unanimously there, Liz. Thank you, Councillors.
So, Mr. Mayor, I want to point out one thing on that, is that also it would have been difficult for you to adopt a forest management plan. It's spelled on the agenda with two R's, so I'm not sure if Liz had something in mind there, but you know.
Took me a minute.
Sorry. I had to say that.
All right. We're going to go on to agenda item number 13. Resolution 192025, withdraw from territory, Haley Sheldon.
Hello. Okay. So first of all, I'd like to introduce the applicant is here tonight. It is Jeff and Samantha Britton. And they are here represented by their planner, Crystal Orr. Okay. They've submitted a petition to withdraw 1173 North Crest Road from the territory of the city of Coquille. You'll remember that this process has three steps. We would be, we are tonight at step one. If the council determines the public interest will be furthered by the withdrawal of this territory, then the council may pass a resolution declaring as such. There is a draft resolution in your packet that declares that. The argument for public interest is made by the applicant. That is in your packet. Would anybody like me to read that out loud?
Yes, please.
Okay. And I'm going to read a snippet of it. And then if the applicant would like, and Mayor, if you'd like to call them up, they can elaborate on that, okay? Public interest justification, withdrawal of this property serves the public interest by aligning jurisdictional boundaries with existing infrastructure zoning and land use, ensuring efficient allocation of city resources by avoiding extension of urban services where unfeasible, reducing administrative overlap and potential zoning conflicts between city and county regulations, and supporting orderly growth and consistency with the city's comprehensive plan by removing a property that does not meet urban service standards. While we're reading some things out loud, just, these things are in your packet, but just in case anybody didn't get a chance to go through it, I'm going to read to you the background section that establishes some facts about the property. And now, thinking about it, I probably should have read these before I read the public interest justification. So if we need to go back to that, that's okay. Okay. So our first comprehensive plan in 1982 includes this property inside city limits. The property is served by Shelley Road, Crest Acres Water District, which serves Coquille. They serve water that we make via private infrastructure. No change to the applicant's water system or water service would be necessitated by the withdrawal. Next, the subject property is on a private onsite septic system. No change to their sewer system would be necessitated by the withdrawal. The property is located on North Crest Road, which is a city public street. It's not maintained by the city. The property is served by, and the applicant talks about this in their application, is served by a combination of city and county public streets. If you've been up to North Crest Road, you know that you usually take Second Street up to Shelley Road, to Shelley Lane, and then back over to Crest Acres Road and North Crest Road. So you take a loop that goes east and then comes back west into the city. When you go east and you exit city limits, you're then on county roads and you come loop back in and you're back on a city road. There's maps in your packet that show this. If the property is withdrawn from the city, it will be withdrawn from the city of Coquille and our urban renewal taxing districts. It will be added to the Coquille Rural Fire Protection District. You can see your attachment three for their tax statement in a comparison of a nearby tax statement. The public interest justification talks about this. So when we go back to that, what they're saying is that the withdrawal of this property would serve the public interest because now, aligning jurisdictional boundaries with existing infrastructure zoning and land use, ensuring efficient allocation of city resources by avoiding extension of urban services where unfeasible, reducing administrative overlap and potential zoning conflicts between city and county regulations, supporting orderly growth and consistency with our comprehensive plan. So it's up to you tonight to take those facts and their argument and determine if you think that there is public interest in withdrawing this property from the city of Coquille. If you have questions about facts in that matter, you can go ahead and ask me. In terms of determining, making this determination, that is up to you. Okay? All right. And then also, if you'd like, you can hear from the applicant.
Is this the only property that, on this section here, that is city?
Let's look at the map. Let's look at the map. So if you scroll, no, you're not scrolling, you're flipping. So let's go into your packet. You see the council letter here and get to where you see attachment two maps. Okay? Once you get to attachment two maps, you're going to look at that first page of maps and the bottom page is like a yellow, blue, and pink map, right? Okay. That map, the blue line, shows our urban growth boundary, which we've talked about before. It's the big donut, right? And then the pink line shows our city limits. So then that little black sliver is the property that we're talking about. So you can see that they have other properties that are inside city limits around them, but they also have properties that are in county that are in that donut hole. Do you see that on the map?
Yeah.
Take a second to look at it because it really can show you sort of where, what the, you can kind of imagine what the map would look like without that property, right? And it's that black, okay. While we're looking at maps, I'm going to have you look at a couple more maps. Look at the next page of maps. And you're going to see a map of our water and sewer service and a red dotted line that shows the city limits. And you can see where their property is in relation to the city limits there too. And then you can see where it is in relation to our utility service. So there's a lot of properties up there that are on Shelley Road, Crest Acres, that are in city limits, and there's some that are outside of city limits. Then you can see the, next map is the transportation system. You can see where the county road is and where the city road is, and you can see that U that I'm talking about looping out and going back in.
So whether it's in city limits or not, it's still in the urban growth boundary. So it is encompassed in what the city had always intended to be part of this natural growth process. So it's been annexed in or it's been, it is part of the city. We have, our city limits are jagged all over our city. Switched back and forth between county and city. All over the place. And so, right?
You can see a good map that shows where the city limits is versus where the urban growth boundary is. And there are some holes. There are some holes out in that area. The property was not annexed into the city. When the city made its maps, right, this property was included in the city of Coquille and some of the surrounding properties were included in the urban growth boundary. If you look at the, that yellow map, right above it is the oldest map that we have of our city limits and urban growth boundary. And you can see what the urban growth boundary area looked like then versus what it looks like now out in that eastern part of the city. And the applicant may want to make a presentation as well.
Is the applicant, wish to do that? Sure.
Hello. My name is Crystal Orr. Is it on? I don't know.
Yeah.
Anyway, I don't have a lot to add other than, get back to this. It's, the property is not served by the sanitation services or the water service. It relies on Coos County for the roads. They maintain the roads. The city of Coquille does not. So the property owners feel that it's in the best interest to, for the tax money to go to Coos County to maintain the roads for the property. And I don't know if you have any other questions.
I have a comment.
Here.
Again, I'm going to reiterate, we have a lot of city roads. This just sets a precedent. I don't think it benefits, it benefits the landowner. I don't think it benefits the interest of the public to deannex. That's my opinion.
There's been two other properties that were deannexed within the last two years, and it was the same instance.
Yeah. And the last one that I voted on, I vehemently oppose that one for every reason that it could set this precedent. So we have properties in our city and the onus is on the applicant to fully make sure that it's presented, that it's in the public's best interest. And I, I'm not sure. I don't see it. I see a lot of planning. I can speak and I get it, but I just, I'm not sure I see it that it's in the public's best interest. To remove a property from the city limits when all said properties around the city still use... City services and city roads.
Can I speak? They aren't using the city services, though.
Right. We have properties in our city that don't use city services.
So why should they take...
It's within the, it's within the urban growth boundary and the city limits. But go ahead, Sam.
Well, city limits usually, most of it stops at the Mormon church. So you go past the Mormon church of Shelley Road and you go all the way to the end. There's eight properties in one section and nothing past that. Everything's county, according to back in the 90s, Patty Strain owned this property. There was, she annexed like eight of these houses in because she wanted to become city mayor. Jerry Wadsworth lives at their city disposal. John Higgins, which was a city planner. And our house was Mentraff, which he was a city attorney at one time. So I think they annexed and zoned this in so they were able to, you know, support the city or work for the city. But I have no city water, no city sewer. We have four and a half acres. Our neighbors have 70 over here. I don't know how many over here. My neighbor's Dan Maynard's. And the grandma McCabe, they, she has like 70 acres. They have no, they even have a well. So I feel like we're all the way past the Mormon church and we're the only eight people in the city. I mean, how is urban growth going to go? Are they going to go up Third Street and combine us in? I mean, I don't think it should ever been in the urban growth boundary in the first place.
I'll also add, like, to make an argument that it's not in the public's best interest, there's no argument for why it would be in the best interest of the public to not allow her to deannex.
Well, I would partially disagree with that. I mean, you're asking us, right now, that property produces tax revenue for the city. This was the problem I had while I was reading the packet yesterday, was, was, okay, what is the benefit to the city of Coquille to let this property go and give up that tax revenue? What is the benefit? And that's what I'm, you know, what's the benefit to the city to let the property go? That's what I...
Well, I can understand that because once the city has it, why would they want to let it go? But why would it not be a benefit to the county? You know, the county's in need of...
We're not here to...
I'm not, I'm not here to serve the county. I'm here to serve the city's interest. Clearly.
I don't feel that, that I'm...
Those services aren't being brought to this county.
Yeah, not to get the services. I have cows on our property. The city police doesn't come up and take care of the problem. I've called 911 several times. You know, I got video on my phone right now I can show you because I have a problem with scolari's cows. And my property is getting damaged and the city's not taking care of it. My husband gets his excavator out and buys gravel and grates the road. You know, the neighbors pitching and help. So how's the city? What are you guys doing for me? Besides taking my money? Seriously. And I do pay taxes. I have a beauty salon in town, a coffee shop in town. I'm paying two sewer bills when I have one meter. I mean, I could go on and on. And I have not brought any of that up, so I feel like I'm paying my fair share.
Yeah. So what, but what's in front of us is this one property. Is it in the best interest of the public to remove this one property from city limits?
Okay. There's eight properties up there and I, I'm not going to say this, but the neighbors, I know Maynard's would love to be out, McCabe's, but I'm here just representing myself.
Yes. That's correct.
So when was this property moved from county into city?
It wasn't. It was always in the city.
When Patty, before Patty Strain owned it, it wasn't.
It was always within the city.
Okay. So it was always within the city. So then why is it just now that it's a problem?
Because we want to do like an ADU and we've been trying to figure out different things we want to do with our property and having cows...
Do we abandon, do we not allow ADUs?
I think that's just working through the planning with codes and if the...
We have been trying to do that out.
Okay. She just... So, so I think, I think within the city limits, we have codes. But then even with the codes, there's... Opportunities for application and possible variances that go in front of the planning commission. Correct? Is that a general statement?
Yes. And you can have an ADU on your property.
But then you can't have an RV 399 square feet that is a house, correct? It's a tiny home.
You can't use an RV as a...
It's not an RV, but it has a plate on it. But it is a tiny home.
And you would just detitle it.
It's considered an RV.
Yeah. It's a part, the way building code, it's not the city considers it. It's an RV. And so you can't live in an RV in city limits outside of an RV park or a mobile home park unless you have a temporary hardship or you're living on a construction site where you're building your home. And that is what, what I, yeah, I communicated. But you can have an ADU.
It has to be, it has to be to building code standards for residential...
Like a manufactured home or a tiny home, but not one that's mobile. Yeah.
Yep.
Foundation and detitling it work for that?
No. That's a better question for the building. That's something that we can answer.
I find out that stuff all the time, so that's why I'm asking.
No, it's built to RV standards. It's not built to a manufactured home standard.
It has to meet Oregon's residential specialty code or the manufactured home code like Crystal's saying. Yeah. And so just put it, just slap it on a foundation might not work, but that's outside, a little outside of my lane. Yeah.
Basically, I just feel that we're paying taxes for... Basically, I just feel that we're paying taxes for, and we're not getting no amenities from the city at all. No garbage, no sewer, no water, no fire, I got fire, no police.
We got police.
Where are they at when I call 911?
I can't, I can't.
Yes, yeah, but you can certainly call the chief, and I.
And he's a very responsive chief.
And so, I, I can't reply, you do get city services.
And if we go around and.
Evaluate how each property gains something or loses something, but what's in front of us right now is, is it in the best interest, not yours, is it in the best interest of the public for us to move this property from city limits? That's what's in front of us right now.
I'd like to make a comment. So, totally can understand that this is something in your interest. In prior cases, the two that were deannexed, it was something that was absolutely necessary to resolve a major problem. We had the flooding issue with the one property, and it was at a point where it couldn't be solved with any other way than us making that decision to deannex it and to allow the process to move forward. I personally don't see enough here for us to make another exception on this one. I feel like the other ones had emergency issues at hand, and this one is just more of a property's interest as opposed to city.
Yeah, one of those properties is actually stated promises that the city, or that the city did.
So that was.
The one, but, for one of them, but.
And the other one was a planning commissioner that wanted to deannex her property.
Mm-hmm, yep. Yeah, I.
And the other one was because she wanted to divide it.
No, the other one is.
And she was also allowed into the city without having the proper determinations beforehand, when she should have originally been allowed into the city.
That one was proven that promises were made that could not be fulfilled.
So it was in the city's best.
Best interest, because at that time, when she was annexed.
Yeah, they shouldn't have made those promises.
So that's why she was deannexed. It wasn't for her purpose to split, it's because the city had made documented promises the city couldn't make. I mean, I'm generally speaking.
So even when the city owns a road and is non-maintained, who pays for the gravel? When it's non-maintained?
Which road?
The city road.
Sorry.
My common statement to that to any citizen is contact our Public Works, Mr. Denny.
So even if it's non-maintained, the city will take care of it if, if you want the road maintained?
My statement is.
Contact Mr. Denny.
Maintain it?
That's what we tell every citizen of every city, potholes and everything, make sure you contact Public Works. And I have found.
If it's not maintained, they're not gonna maintain it.
Yeah, I know.
Does anybody have any other questions?
If you have any questions.
Damn. They don't make a patrol up there. What the city giving us?
It's all right.
Hey, all the taxes, don't get none.
Again, I think that's a great conversation to have with chief, and he's very responsive, and have that conversation with chief.
Well, I see them from the, you know, top terrace.
I invite you, I invite you to have a conversation with chief, not at this meeting.
And Patty Strain, she set all this up. I can't speak to the past, I can only speak to what's in front of me right here, right now. Okay, so we have a couple options in front of us.
I can do, I move to deny resolution 19 dash, sorry.
13.
I am sorry, I am sorry. I was on the wrong page. I am sorry, Tab.
Was I, I was correct, right?
Yeah, you're, you're correct, yep. One page off, sorry.
All right. All right. I move to deny resolution 19 dash 2025, and to not initiate the withdrawal of 1173 North Crest Road from the city of Kokil city limits. I'm gonna go and second that motion.
Motion by Counselor Flynn.
Deny resolution 192025 is read, seconded by Mayor Thirty. Any other questions or discussion at this point by councilors? I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a raise a hand.
All those approving.
The motion.
Say aye.
Raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, that signifies unanimous decision. Thank you, councilors. Next up, we have Agenda I number 14, request for state revenue funds. Yes, Mr. Norberg, you got that one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors. So, as you recall, this year, you know, we get an annual allocation of state share revenue funds, and during the budgetary process this year, a portion of the funds were allocated. There is a remaining balance of $12,151, and before you decide, you have two requests for those funds. One, from the Kokil Valley Historical Society for $10,000, and the other from the Kokil Police Department for the full balance to go towards, sorry, body cams and tasers. So that's what we have. Both parties are represented this year, this evening, if you want to hear from them.
Well, I'll make a statement, and then let's see if we wanna hear from them. And I, I should ask the councilors if they'd like to hear from them as well, and, and I'll certainly offer that. I do know that in our budget committee meeting this last year, because of our budget shortfalls, we'd made a specific designation towards aligning those funds towards police and fire whenever possible to help fund those things that were very deficient in. So that was part of the ongoing conversation, even back then, when we had a presentation in front of us. And so, I just, I'm revisiting that. I gotta say, though, I love the work. I mean, Kokil Museum is so important on that corner, and they've done so much amazing work, and they've utilized grant dollars from our URA, which I'm super thankful for. And so, any questions, councilors, that you wanna ask either one of, either chief or Kokil Museum?
So, in here, it states that there, that there's a request for the normal operations. Do we have a breakdown of what that is?
We do not have a budget or any indication of exactly what that would be expended on.
I'll make a comment. Chief, I agree with the equipment that you're looking at. I'm familiar with it, and it sets your officers up to be a lot safer, particularly with these tasers and everything with acts on. As either the taser or the gun are unholstered, the body cam automatically comes on, so if you have an emergency situation, where all of a sudden an officer under attack or having to defend somebody, it immediately turns on the camera and does the back time to capture the event, and it protects the officer, it protects the agency, it protects the city. And I think it's a huge investment for us in our police department, and I support it wholeheartedly.
Mr. Mayor, I'd also comment on this. I'm a history major, I love history, love the museum. The problem, though, is the police department needs these cameras, and speaking as the former district attorney, I can tell you, at first, when they went to body cameras, it created a heck of a lot of extra work for us. But in the end, it's, I'm sure, well, just for example, I had to handle three officer-involved shootings where there were fatality, and Chief, what's his name down there, Doyle, was involved in one of them, and the videos from the cars and from the body cameras made it abundantly clear that the officers were forced into the situation they were in having to shoot. And so it made my job a lot easier to make the call that they were justified shootings. It also, in at least two of those cases, there was never a tort claim filed because of the video. It saved those agencies from being sued. The third one, there is a tort claim was filed, but I don't think it's gonna go anywhere. But the other thing is, I'm sure those body cameras are saving the city some money in this sense, because defense attorneys now are looking at the footage that comes from your contacts, your interviews and what have you, there's no longer a dispute about who said what.
Mm-hmm.
And what happened on the street. And so, I've noticed that the motion practice, motions to suppress and what have you, went way down, which means less overtime for them to come to court. It also means less trials, because defendants see that they're, oh, I'm in the suit. So again, it saves money. And it also is a good tool for the chief, because if he has a complaint about an officer, he can go to those body camera tapes, is the complaint valid, and if it is, to take appropriate corrective action. As much as I would love to support the, give $10,000 to the museum, in the long run for the city, I think it's in the best interest of the city to give that money to the police.
Additionally, on that equipment, it lines up with the other agencies around. It integrates, if you're within proximity to each other, you can share it to the other agencies, and you can link them. It links between the body cam and any vehicles around exactly at that point. And now, that equipment, you're able to share it directly to the DA's office. That way, you don't have to make all the discs, and it's, it helps with the discovery process, so saving money there as well.
Yeah, and just to reiterate to Counselor Frazier, but I, we genuinely love the museum and the work that you guys have done, and, and probably three or four years ago, I think we even supported some of these operating costs, because we were able to and we could. We were in this kind of situation this year in particular, and so.
Yeah. So we'll have a motion.
Didn't, didn't we approve this already during budget?
No, that, no, we didn't. This is in addition to items we've already approved.
Gotcha.
For, police and fire were the direct, I believe, the direct beneficiaries of state rep.
Yeah, that's correct, and then there was, you know, but there was a balance of $12,151 left in the budget that wasn't allocated.
Oh, okay, so this zeros that line item out.
Uh, yes.
Gotcha.
There's no way to tie into URA for anything other than the improvements.
Well, is any of, I think that's what we really don't know, just 'cause it's operating expenses, but is there something in there that could be covered underneath URA?
Yeah, I'll just say.
If you had an itemized budget.
Anything that falls under the budget of us being able to do through the, through the URA for the facade improvements or anything like that, continue to, to reach out for those. We'd love to support anyway.
Yeah, and I, and I think if, if we're able to, you know, we might even be able to, if more improvements are being done to the building that are affordable and can be done, just approach Mr. Norberg, because even if it's, you know, we have certain parameters of timeframes when certain things can be done on certain parts of the building, but we might even have some flexibility there, that, that's a very practical way we can continue to help, because that, it's very important in that corner, what you guys do, and appreciate
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the $12,151 that is left over from state shared revenue funds, and that that money be allocated to the police department for updated tasers and body cams.
I second.
Okay, motion by Counselor Frazier to allocate $12,151, as he stated, towards the police department purchase of taser and cameras, seconded by Counselor Corbus. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Okay, Liz, we have unanimous decision there. Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Kokil Museum, virtually, for all your work, and we couldn't help this time around, so. All right, we're on to good to the order at this point, councilors? All right, we will adjourn our general session at 8:07. I'm gonna turn it over to our URA president, Madam President, Corbus, to do our URA meeting.
All right. I will call the meeting to order at 8:10. And first up, the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. Any other items for discussion on this? Comments, questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Third item, good to the order, is there anything to be discussed?
I'm gonna go ahead and throw that out, because I'm gonna give a shout out to Kokil Schwab. The building looks phenomenal. So we have businesses and buildings that continue to improve. Kokil Museum, we mentioned it several times, many other buildings. So just a reminder for everybody, and if you're not aware of where that urban renewal area is, talk to Mr. Norberg, because we have grant dollars that could potentially match for painting, facade improvements. We have approved projects in the past for infrastructure-like electrical improvements that will improve our buildings, and so, great job, everybody. It's, the city's looking so much better these days, and appreciate it, so take advantage of those grant dollars.
We will go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 8:11.
All right, thanks, everybody, for joining us.